All right. It is seven o'clock and we are on air, so I will call our meeting to order. I call our meeting, our regular city council meeting of September 28th, 2021, to order. Our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone who's able to, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is our open forum, and I will pass it to Executive Assistant Winn, Kelly Winn, to let people know how they can participate in the open forum and let us know if anyone is here.
Thank you, Mayor. We always encourage residents to attend our meetings in person if you'd like to make comments during the open forum or a public hearing. You can attend in person. You can also email myself, ahead of meeting, at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov to have your comments read by a staff person. You can also leave me a voicemail at 612-861-9711, and your comments can be read by a staff member, or you can call in live during meetings. And that number is 612-861-0651. I do not currently have anybody on the line.
Thank you, and I'll just check, is anyone here in person for our open forum? Okay, looks like nobody here is in person for the open forum. We'll wait a little bit to see if anybody calls in. Okay, Executive Assistant Winn, is anybody here on the line for the open forum?
I do not have anybody on the phone.
All right, seeing as we have nobody in person or on the phone for the open forum, I will move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the concurrent City Council and Housing and Redevelopment Authority Work Session of September 7th, 2021, the City Council Work Session of September 14th, 2021, and the City Council Meeting of September 14th, 2021.
I'd move to approve the minutes?
Supple, second.
There's been a motion made to move the minutes, and second, it's been made by Council Member Wayland and seconded by Council Member Supple. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the minutes have been approved. So we do have two presentations today. The first one is the proclamation recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I have the proclamation here, and actually, Executive Assistant Winn, is there the actual printed out proclamation here in the chambers? By chance? Oh, maybe she's not... Okay, I don't think I have it here. But we do have our Human Rights Chair, Mara Glubka, who is here for, on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, who proposed this proclamation and helps with the proclamation every single year for Indigenous Peoples' Day. So we will get it printed out and signed, and then maybe we'll present it at the next Human Rights Commission. I don't know if it's, I don't have it here with me like I normally do. So I will read the proclamation. Whereas the land now known as the State of Minnesota has been home to Indigenous people since time in memorable, in, oh, sorry, in memorial, and without whom the building of the state would not have been possible. And whereas Indigenous people have made essential contributions to the landscape of Minnesota, including traditional knowledge, experience, labor, technology, science, philosophy, industry, and arts. And whereas Indigenous people have long served as protectors and stewards of the natural environment for the benefit of all. And whereas the city of Richfield strives to eliminate systemic racism towards Indigenous peoples and seeks to promote practices and policies that honor the state's Indigenous roots and history and contributions. Whereas the city of Richfield recognizes students enrolled in the Richfield Public Schools who identify as American Indian. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day serves as an important time to reflect on the experiences of Indigenous people to ensure greater access and opportunity. And whereas the city of Richfield joins a growing number of government entities across the country that have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in lieu of Columbus Day in order to promote appreciation, tolerance, reconciliation, understanding, friendship, and continued partnership among all of its people. And whereas the Richfield Human Rights Commission supported this proclamation at a September 7th, 2021 meeting and recommended that the city of, City of Richfield City Council do the same. Now, therefore, I, Maria Riegen Gonzalez, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Richfield, proclaimed this 28th day of September, 2021. I'm just gonna go check at the podium to see if the actual proclamation is there. Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much, Chair Glubka, for representing the Human Rights Commission and symbolically receiving the proclamation. So thank you. And I do think that there is a community event that I saw. I don't have much information, so if we do find information about it, I believe it's hosted by the Richfield School District, but I'm still trying to find out more information in a couple Mondays from now. So I think if this is something that we can promote, that would be great, but getting a little more information on it first so that we can share with the community. Any comments on the proclamation from Council Members? Council Member Supple?
I just wanted to again thank the Human Rights Commission, because I do think this is a very important proclamation, and I'm very glad that we're taking the time to state our beliefs, and I thank the Human Rights Commission for putting it all together.
Thank you, Council Member Supple. Council Member Wayland?
I just want to lift up that I often talk about when we have proclamations like this, the, how exciting it is when we are not just talking about it, but following it up with action, and so want to lift up, I know the Community Services Commission was looking at, and the Recreation Department has been exploring, how to incorporate more, like honoring Indigenous history and contributions into our park system, and so look forward to that. It's still very early on, but look forward to more of the fruit that comes from that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council Member Wayland. Thank you. All right, I will move us to our next item, which is another presentation of the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association Awards and Presentation. I will read a brief summary and then ask some folks to join. So the Richfield Recreation Department has been awarded the following, the following awards, not just one, we're overachievers, from the Minnesota Recreation Parks, Recreation and Parks Association. The Off-Leash Dog Area at Roosevelt Park has won the award for excellence in facility planning. The Richfield Virtual Recreation Programming has won the award for excellence in recreation programming. The following is a brief summary of both programs. The Off-Leash Dog Area at Roosevelt Park. The Off-Leash Dog Area Roosevelt Park won the MRPA Award as it showcases best practices in park facility planning. The project was strategic, was in a strategic location, well researched in design, collaborative with both internal and external partners, cost-effective in implementation, and included community engagement. That is such a great example of all the things that we strive to do across our whole city. I love how that was written. The facility is unique in that the space that it was created is developed from underutilized, from an underutilized skating rink. The rinks don't have a warming house and others nearby do, and over the years were not well attended. In a site that met much of the established project criteria, including adequate space and lighting, that was easy to convert to LEDs, which was not found in other parks in our already built-out community. The project also achieved all the established goals and was very well received by residents of Richfield and the neighboring communities. Overall, the facility, the facility was created out of community desire and feedback, and in the middle of a pandemic became a safe outlet for pets and their owners to have a safe space to recreate together. Now, we have the description of the virtual recreation program. The recreation team quickly pivoted during the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic to offer safe and accessible virtual programming. We created a robust program that aimed to keep the community engaged both physically and mentally, and continued to create a sense of connectedness and community. The team collaborated to create recreation programs that were multicultural, connected to all ages, represented our community, and were accessible via phone, tablet, and computer. We developed through many internal and external partners, over 100 virtual programs, and had over 1.2 million virtual engagements as of January, 2021. The virtual recreation program was largely funded through grants and included opportunities such as puppet shows, virtual dance parties, sports drills, virtual bilingual bike safety classes, and many more. We are excited that through the pandemic, we were able to keep our community active and engaged in the safest way possible. MRPA Award Committee Member Tracy Peterson is here to help us with the award, and we have our Recreation Department here as well. So if Tracy can join me and the Recreation Department at the podium as well, if we can, if you can join Tracy and I, that would be great.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Amy, for having me, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tracy Peterson, and I am a member of the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association Awards Committee. I also serve as the Assistant Director of Recreation and Facilities for the city of Adana. It is an honor to be here tonight to present these two awards of excellence to the Richfield Parks and Recreation Department for your Off-Leash Dog Park at Roosevelt Park and the virtual programming. Before I do that, I just want to take a few minutes to tell you about the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. The Awards Committee was created in 1987 with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for their excellence in the field of parks and recreation. The committee's goal is to increase awareness of and appreciation for the excellent parks, trails, facilities, recreation programs, and services that are occurring in Minnesota. There are six categories that nominations can be submitted for: administrative or management strategies, marketing and communications, park and facility, programming and events, sponsorships and partnerships, and volunteer initiatives. The committee appreciated Richfield's commitment and well-designed approach to finding and providing a safe, equitable, centrally-located, and accessible dog park for Richfield's pet owners and pets. The committee appreciated the creativity and innovation in providing virtual programming during the challenging times of the pandemic. The commitment to offer a wide spectrum of programming that was collaborative, multicultural, safe, inclusive, and educational and active and engaging was impressive to the committee. The committee would like to recognize Amy Markle, who nominated the projects for an Award of Excellence, as well as the entire Parks and Recreation staff and City Council for continuing to provide innovative and impactful facilities and programs to your community. Again, congratulations to the city of Richfield.
So, do you want to maybe, Neil, would you like folks to do the presentation of the word here? Okay, so maybe we can do the presentation of the word here with the staff, and then Neil will have a great spot to take some pictures. So if you guys could come over here and do the award presentation. And then, do any of the recreation staff want to say anything about the word? Or if you, if you want to talk, I want to open it up for you all. This is a great achievement. And then I see this PowerPoint, is that for the presentation?
Director Markle? Thank you so much for the awards from MRPA and for presenting them to us tonight, and to our council, mayor, and city staff for all the support of the Recreation Department and what we've been able to accomplish in such a challenging year. I'm just really proud of our entire team. I know not everyone could be here tonight, but everyone did a very quick pivot during COVID so we could stay relevant, I think, when we were most needed. This past year, we saw our parks probably the busiest they've ever been, so it felt really good to be able to provide programming for people to stay active, engaged, and continue to virtually, continue to build that sense of community, you know, across Richfield. So we're just very honored. I also want to say thank you to all the other departments with our, particularly with our virtual program. You know, we had like Virtual Vehicle Day, which included police cars and fire trucks. We worked with Public Works, and with the dog park, we leaned heavily on Public Works' help to get that implemented as well. So it's an award with recreation, but really behind us are all the other departments that helped make it happen too, so thank you.
Thank you so much to Director Markle. You are a tremendous leader, Director Markle. We're really fortunate to have you leading our Recreation Department here at the city of Richfield, and a huge thank you to all of our staff. I'm sure that council have plenty things to say, so I'll just pass it over to whoever would like to say something. Council Member Hayford O'Leary?
Yeah, I'm just very pleased and impressed with how your department pivoted to really unique circumstances and worked really well to serve our community, and specifically the, the dog park I've heard so much about from residents, that this is something that I knew they wanted, that wasn't a met community need, that you're able to come up with a really cost-effective, great way to do it, that people already have come to treasure. I think that's, that's remarkable. So congratulations and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Council Member Wayland?
Yes, definitely congratulations on, on both fronts. Just Roosevelt Park's dog area is, is exciting to me. Roosevelt Park is like the one that I go to, it's the closest one to my house, and there are always people there enjoying it. I'm not even a dog person, but I get excited to watch the dogs as I walk around the park. So that has just been wonderful, and I still frankly can't even like comprehend the success of the virtual recreation program. As someone who's run like social media accounts and other like virtual things for nonprofits before, we've cheered when we broke three digits on something, and you guys broke seven, and so that's just amazing how many people you engaged and how much joy and enthusiasm the community had around that. So thank you, these are well-deserved awards for you all.
Council Member Supple?
So first of all, congratulations and thank you, and it's so nice to see you being recognized for all the work that you do, and we see it all the time, and we totally appreciate it, but it's nice to know that the broader community is hearing about it outside of Richfield. So thank you for all that you do, and for all the things that aren't even part of this award, there's others, there's so much that your department does in so many ways, so thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Council Member Supple. And I'll just say, it's just hard to figure out where to begin giving you all accolades. I mean, this is just tremendous. I remember the, the ribbon cutting for the dog park, and I thought, oh, it's COVID, and I don't know, maybe there's not going to be a lot of people there. There was so many people there and so many dogs, and the staff partnered with other organizations, and people got involved with the roundup at the liquor stores to contribute to that. We even had fire hydrants from the Public Works Department, like it was a whole big community effort. The Community Services, Council, or Commission, sorry, was a part of it as well, and they were getting feedback from their neighbors as well. So that, that is just one example, both of these examples are really huge community efforts. But people, even little details, like having little gift bags and things for the dogs, and these are the things that make the work that is done at Richfield really unique in ways that you don't see in any other community. And then thinking about the virtual programming, I had families and parents say, we are going crazy right now with COVID, and we don't know what we would do without this virtual programming, and you guys have so many awesome, accessible things for us to do during this time. I think the Recreation Department was just a lifesaver in so many ways for so many people. And I know that your department completely pivoted in such a short amount of time, you know, everything that you did, you just said, oh my gosh, how are we going to do this differently? And you didn't shy away from a tremendous challenge that was unprecedented, and you found really creative, accessible ways. And I know that your staff were working day and night on these awesome, innovative ways to support our community, but also getting the accessible playground up and running, and doing all organized trash hauling, doing all kinds of things, having record numbers of people at our parks, and, you know, thinking about how do we work with other departments to enforce the mask mandates and tell people they can't play in the playground, and, you know, adapting to everything that we experience. So these are just great examples of the innovative work and the great leadership of Director Markle and all of her staff. I think about also so many other things that aren't included, like the great work we've done with her ice arena. So I could go on and on, but I just want to say thank you. It's, it's kind of hard to talk about how great the work is that you're all doing and how much our community appreciates your work. And I would just say that that's a model that you see not just in the Recreation Department, but you see it across all of our departments in our whole city. So we're really happy that you're all getting recognized for this, and thank you to Director Markle and all of our staff. Thank you. Thank you, now to the boring stuff. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
Supple, I move to approve the agenda.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
Thank you, there's been a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. The next item is a consent calendar, and that will be read by City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you just called me boring, but I'll, I'll, I'll roll with it. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider to approve a contract from the city of Adana to provide dispatching service to the city of Richfield Police and Fire Department. Item B, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing acceptance of the Office of Traffic Safety OTS funds for an extension of an original four-year grant to fully fund an officer dedicated for DUI, I'm sorry, DWI enforcement in Richfield. Item C, consider the approval of a Richfield American Legion Post 435 parking lot agreement to implement citywide organized collection and the swapping out of waste and recycling carts from September 27th through October 29th, 2021. Item D, consider the approval of an agreement with Bricksmore SPE One LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, to implement citywide organized collection and the swapping out of waste and recycling carts from September 27th through October 29th, 2021, at the Hub Shopping Center. Item E, ratify a resolution approving a waiver of application fees for an interim use permit at 6915 Harriet Avenue South. Item F, consider the approval of the lease agreement between the city of Richfield and ETS Elite South Central LLC for the use of the space. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Thank you, there's been a motion to move the consent calendar in a second. Any questions or comments? Council Member Supple?
I just wanted to clarify on item F, when we originally got the agenda, there was a typographical error, and that has since been corrected, but we want to make sure that everyone is clear that it's $1,500 per month rent for the first 12 months of the lease, and after that, it's $1,550 per month for the remaining terms of the lease. So it's by, it's a monthly amount, not a yearly amount.
Thank you, Council Member Supple. Any other comments or questions from folks? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right, the consent calendar is approved. The next item goes to Council Member Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. This is to consider a second reading of an ordinance amending City Code subsection 130513 related to snow removal and snow emergency parking restrictions and approval of a resolution authorizing summary publication. Richfield's known for its excellent snow removal and ongoing upkeep of streets. However, current snow emergency parking restrictions and parking availability place undue burden on residents in high-density areas of the city, which can lead to parking citations and potential towing of vehicles. In an effort to reduce the number of snow emergencies and ticket and tow occurrences, the proposed ordinance amendment will change the threshold at which snow emergency is automatically in effect from two inches to four inches. The ordinance change is one part of a winter parking pilot program that will be implemented over the 2021, 2022 winter season. Pilot program will be evaluated annually. And then, Public Works has provided the summary of the impact on service delivery, because I know this has been of interest of, to community members. Public Works believes changing the snow emergency threshold from two inches to four inches will have little to no effect on the department's ability to clear snow in a thorough and timely fashion. This change will have no operational effect on the department's snow plowing routine because the department will continue to plow any amount of measurable snow. Public Works will still encourage residents to remove their cars from the street following any snowfall, and expects most residents to voluntarily comply because they are accustomed to the old snow emergency policy. Public Works does, does expect to spend more time the day following a snow event cleaning up snowbirds with this new threshold, but snowbird and other miscellaneous cleanup is already part of the existing snow removal routine. Any issues identified with the routine clearing of snow will be noted and reviewed as part of the annual evaluation of the pilot program. Does staff have anything else to add? Yep. I'll go ahead and make the motion then. I move that we approve the second reading of the ordinance amending City Code subsection 130513 related to snow removal and snow emergency parking restrictions and approve the resolution authorizing summary publication.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made by Council Member Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Council Member Wayland. Any comments or questions? Council Member Supple?
I wanted to thank the residents that have contacted council members about this issue, and I know that one thing that everybody agreed on is that we have really quality, good plowing service, and one question that came up is, would this affect like the ability of emergency vehicles to get through? And so I did check with the fire chief and the Public Works Director, and they said that because we're going to continue plowing the way we had before, it should not affect emergency services, but that they would constantly be monitoring, and if something needed to be adjusted, they would make adjustments. So I wanted to let residents know that we did. So I wanted to let residents know that we did check on those concerns and got some feedback on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add, I am grateful for how great our snow clearing is. I said last time, and I'll repeat it, that we've set the bar so high for excellent snow clearing that people are afraid that anything could damage that. But I do want to say, even though this is a permanent ordinance change, I think we take this seriously. This is a pilot program. This is our time to learn. This may not be the program we have next year or in 20 years, but I think it is definitely worth the try because we have an existing problem and I think it's an appropriate response to it. So I hope all residents are really pleased with the new system.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Whelan.
I think just to put a finer point on both of those, just to any residents who are listening or watching this later, we do appreciate continued feedback. If you are experiencing problems on your street throughout winter, please, I mean, you can reach out directly to staff or to your council member or to both. We do hope for feedback so that we can continue to evaluate how this is working.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. I don't think I have anything else to say. Those were the points that I wanted to make sure. Go ahead.
I'll just add to those concerns that the residents have, that our Public Works operators of the plows and the guys clearing the streets do really take pride in the work that they do and will be probably the most critical of the pilot program. So we do want to get any comments that you guys receive, please pass them on and we'll take note of them and reevaluate. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Asher. All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion has been approved. Thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is to consider the approval of a resolution modifying a healthcare savings plan for the local 49 employees. In 2001, the Minnesota Legislature granted authority to the Minnesota State Retirement System, or MSRS, to offer a post-employment healthcare savings plan, or HCSP, to eligible employees of the state of Minnesota and other governmental subdivisions. A post-employment HCSP is an employer-sponsored program that allows employees to save money to pay towards medical expenses and/or health insurance premiums after termination of employment. Employees are able to choose among different investment options provided by the State Board of Investment. Assets contributed into the program are tax-free, accumulate tax-free, and if used for medical expenses, remain tax-free. The IUOE Local 49 Employee Group has agreed upon a modification to its plan that modifies the bi-weekly contribution amount from $45 bi-weekly to $60 bi-weekly. Under state statute, modifications to HCSPs cannot be made more often than once every two years. The last modification to the Local 49 HCSP, or Healthcare Savings Plan, was in May 2015. Staff is recommending, amending the post-employment healthcare savings plan for local 49 employees. Did staff have anything they wanted to add?
Only that we encourage this change and it's a great program for staff, very fiercely responsible and it's a win-win city.
Then I would move to approve a resolution modifying a healthcare savings plan for eligible local 49 employees.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion has been approved. Thank you very much. The next item is the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have our COVID update that Public Health Administrator Jennifer Anderson provided. Richfield has 98, has had 98 new cases since the last council meeting of September 14th and that puts us at a total of 4,422. This compares to Bloomington at 10,629 and Adina at 5,205. It was reported today that Pfizer has submitted clinical data for five to 11-year-olds to the FDA for review. An emergency use authorization request is likely to come in the weeks ahead. Kids in this range could be vaccinated by Halloween. Certainly, certainly good news. So for Bloomington Public Health, there are 3,000 people overdue for their second COVID-19 vaccine. We're working with MDH to develop a testing program to quickly reach the subpopulation to remind them to complete their vaccine series. Protection is better when with completed series versus just one dose. Vaccine rates remain relatively stagnant for all populations. There was, they put together a work group for Bloomington, Adina, and Richfield to meet virtually yesterday, or they had their first meeting yesterday to begin discussions on the federal vaccine testing mandate. While the guidance is still unclear, we're reviewing city, county policies already in place and will begin considering policies with assistance from our attorney. This will be an ongoing weekly meeting. We've gotten some questions about who can receive the booster right now. People who should get a booster shot are people that are 65 years older and older and residents that have, are in long-term care settings. Also, people that are age 50 to 64 years with underlying medical conditions. In addition, people can also receive a booster if they are age 18 to 49 years with an underlying medical condition. People aged 18 to 64 years who are at increased risk for COVID response and transmission because of the occupation or institutional setting. So basically your frontline workers. Right now, that's for the Pfizer vaccine. For the Moderna and the Johnson &amp; Johnson, that is still under control. And then I have some introductions. I wanted to introduce Chris Swanson. He is our new management analyst and you had a chance to meet him at the work session. We are very excited that he is here. He comes to us with considerable city experience, most recently being at the City of St. Paul and then also before that Maplewood. Also, a familiar face, but in a new role. We recently promoted Carrie Sinning. She has been wearing two hats. She is now our city clerk. My pleasure to give your title. And she will be joining us in doing all the minutes going forward. Carrie has been wearing two hats for quite some time now and doing not only those city clerk duties, but also helping literally keep motor vehicle running. She has put in a lot of long hours. We are really grateful to her dedicated service and we're also really excited that she can now fully embrace the clerk role and join us. And that's all for my report.
Any comments from council members? Councilmember Supple.
Just a warm welcome to Management Assistant Swanson and congratulations to City Clerk Sinning.
Other comments or questions? I'd just like to echo that welcome. We're really excited to have you here and congratulations and thank you for all the work that you've done. Just all of the things that you've, that the city manager just mentioned that you've been doing at the same time in the middle of a continued crisis situation and so many staff transitions has been tremendous. So thank you so much, City Clerk Sinning, for your, for your work in these past, well, for several years now, but even recently in the transition. And we're really excited to have you in this new position as city clerk. All right, I will transition us to claims and payroll. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, would you like to do that?
I move approval of claims and payroll.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. And then the next item is hats off to Hometown Hits. Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you. A few items. Because Councilmember Troutman is not here, I can say something about Woodlake without thinking I'm stealing it from him. Woodlake is celebrating its 50th birthday and we're super excited about it. This Saturday, there's events, I believe the time is noon to 5:00. But the Saturday afternoon, so head on over there. It's all free. It'll be fun. It's all outdoors for COVID safety, but go check that out and celebrate 50 years at Woodlake. And then the only other comment I'll make, we've talked about it a lot, but next week is the week for the organized hauling transition. And so I would encourage residents who have questions to reach out to either council or staff, check out the city website. You should have received a letter in the mail with the details on the transition as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. I want to celebrate some of our commissions tonight. First of all, the Arts Commission worked together to put the plans in motion to paint one of the roundabouts by 67th and Lyndale. And there's been a lot of community response to it and a lot of positive feedback. So I want to thank the Arts Commission and the Recreation Department that worked together on that. That was really cool. I also want to thank the Human Rights Commission. They partnered with the Community Development Department at Penfest and they have been getting the word out about Just Deeds. And so if you want to find out how you can discharge the racial covenants on your, on your property, you can go onto the Richfield website. It's richfieldgov or anyway, go to the Richfields website and then hit slash Just Deeds and so they can take care of that. So the Human Rights Commission worked on that. And finally, the Friendship City Commission, whose chair is in the audience with us right now, thank you, has been working to put together a trip to Costa Rica. Due to COVID, the State Department has said that we need to delay that. So the trip's going to be happening in 2023. But I know that Chair Kirsch and the rest of the committee has been working really hard. And also kudos, thank you, he's the chair of our charter commission. So thank you to all the people out there working on commissions.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Yeah, I don't have a great way to phrase this, but yeah, recently there was an issue that came actually before our school board and I don't have an opinion on their policy or their issue, but it came from an external conservative group that had an anti-gay, anti-trans agenda. And I just wanted, my hometown hit is I was really impressed by the rapid response of parents and community members posing that, expressing their opinions on the matter and the response by our school board. So, you know, we use the term ally, whether we mean sexuality issues or racial issues, and that was a really concrete example of what allyship looks like. So it was, it was touching to me to see that.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. And then I will just add one event. Well, it looks like there's power outages again in Richfield just now, so at least where my home is in East Richfield there is. So I'm sure that that's maybe affecting other residents. But this Saturday, from 10:00 AM to noon, we have the Great Pumpkin Giveaway. And I can't remember what annual event this is, but I think it's probably a lot now. I haven't found the details on Facebook yet, but it's at Fairwood Park here in Richfield from 10:00 AM to noon. And it's a great collaborative of business owners in Richfield, community leaders. I know Steve Schneeberger and other folks have been a part of this for years and it's just a great time to build community. They usually have hot drinks for folks, a coloring contest, free pumpkins. So it's a great kind of Halloween fall activity for, to bring the community together. So that's the Great Pumpkin Giveaway at Fairwood Park from 10:00 AM to noon. And I know our staff, our recreation staff are involved in that as well. Any other things from folks? All right, then I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Good night.